Oh, because of the, yeah. Huh?
I don't know, did you get these?
I don't know, I don't know if you sent in or not, I haven't seen.
John did the same thing.
Five twenty-nine mics alive.
Having appointed time of five thirty, I now call the July thirtieth committee of hold to order. Will you all rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I warn everybody, I left my cheat sheet in the back, but uh, I'm gonna do this thing. Mr. Lesko, will you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Rockford?
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase? Alderwoman Nottriano?
Here.
Alderman Carlson?
Here.
Alderwoman Conley?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Henauer?
Here.
Mr. Chairman of quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm gonna call up Fire Chief Kenny for announcement and Police Chief.
Sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I just have a brief message. The mayor is not able to be with us this evening due to an emergent family situation. And she wants the public to know that even though she's physically absent at this time, that she is still monitoring all aspects of the city and the concerns of its citizens. But I ask for prayers for the mayor and her family at this time. And I want to read a statement from Mayor Busher. "Our community is in so much pain from the senseless act that took Sonia Massey's life. While I have spent the last week in contact with her father, attending her services, and working with stakeholders in our community, I have been dealing with a personal situation at the same time. My husband has cancer, had surgery, and now has had a major complication from this surgery. And while I wish I could be there this evening alongside Chief Kenny and Chief Scarlett, I know my place is in the ICU with my husband. Please keep the Massey and Wilburn family in your prayers. As I stated in an earlier statement, they will be living with this pain and tragedy every day of their lives." At this time, I'd really like to ask everyone for their prayers for Mayor Busher and her family.
Absolutely. I'm gonna do a moment of silence for prayer. Um, it's just a lot of, lot of tragedy in our community, so I think we just need to take the time and just a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We wish Mayor Busher and her family the best, and we will be praying for them as well as our whole community, thank you. Um, I have not been advised of any other presentations in my- Correct, Mr. Clerk?
You're correct.
Is there a OBM report? Treasurers' report?
Alright.
Alright, no treasurer's report tonight, alrighty, we will go with... Approval of the, I'll take a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you. It's been moved and seconded for passage of any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Let the record reflect that Alderman, Alderwoman Purchase has joined this quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now we have the ordinance tabled, tabled remaining in committee, Mr. Clerk, could you please read these ordinances?
Twenty twenty-four zero eight nine, twenty twenty-four one seventy-eight, twenty twenty-four two thirty-nine.
The action, alright, move right along. Mr. Clerk, now for the ordinances for committee consideration.
C W P, twenty twenty-four two seventy-two, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of six hundred and six thousand seventy-three dollars for the purchase of equipment not received by the end of FY twenty-four for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two seventy-three, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE twenty-five dash zero four dash twelve hydrated lime for Unit Four with Mississippi Lime Company in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and forty dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Public Works, twenty twenty-four two seventy-four, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of appropriation authority in the amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars from the city garage expense budget to expense budget lines established to accommodate the USDA Forest Service grant for the Office of Public Works. Move consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two seventy-five, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars for the Office of Public Works. Move for cons- consent. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on the matter?
Uh, Chair, just, uh, need to be noted as present for this ordinance.
Noted.
Even on the consent, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, Alderwoman Conley is present on this vote, is there any further discussion on the matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two seventy-six, an ordinance authorizing execution of contract PW twenty-five dash twenty-eight with Lake Area Disposal Incorporated for two years of residential landscape waste collection in amount not to exceed two million sixty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars for the Office of Public Works. Move for consent.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation that we adopt amendment, proposed amendment number one.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Corporation Counsel, can you touch on this just for clarification?
Yes, proposed amendment number one comes from our Office of Budget Management. It changes the funds from which the payments made from all coming out of the recycling fund to six hundred thousand dollars coming out of the sewer fund, the, with the rest coming out of the recycle fund.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Proposed amendment number one has been moved and seconded for to-
Oh, actually, sorry Chair, I had a question on that.
Sure, I apologize, I didn't say Alderwoman-
No, I'm trying to hit quickly, um, just real quick, Corporation Counsel, can you clear up, is this transfer being done because we are currently not collecting enough to cover the cost of the contract?
I'll defer that to OBM.
Okay.
I need to look into this further, but um, we are not, and right now, we could not cover that, so... But I need to look into Fund Forty-nine further, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We can, we'll get you that information via email before the next meeting to the entire council.
Alderwoman, would you like to keep it on consent or debate until we get that information?
I would prefer we move the, well, pass the amendment first, but then, yes, I would prefer we keep this on debate.
Sure. Alright, it's been, the amendment has been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, no-
Motion for debate?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate, any discussion on the, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
General City Business, twenty twenty-four two seventy-seven, an ordinance increased the number of plastic liquor licenses by one for MVP LLC doing business as MVPs located at nine thirty-three North Grand Avenue. Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two seventy-eight, an ordinance authorizing the local liquor commissioner to issue additional temporary liquor permits to Buzzbomb Brewing Company due to the adverse impact of the June nineteen twenty twenty-four fire on the licensed establishment for the Office of the Mayor.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two seventy-nine, a resolution removing the current bond registrar and paying agent and appointing a new bond registrar and paying agent with respect to certain outstanding bonds of the city of Springfield, Sangamon County, Illinois. Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on this matter?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Corporate Counsel, can you explain a little bit what we're doing?
Yes, so as a part of refunding the, these bonds with the new general obligation bonds that we approved at the last meeting, we approved a new registrar. So this would allow us to, to cease using our, our current registrar and paying agent and use our new registrar for all of the bonds as we retire our old bonds and issue the new ones.
Thank you.
Alright, any, any further discussion? I'll just add that, Ms. Ramona, I know, I know that Mayor Busher had wanted to see the, the new rates on the new bonds before issuing it to, to council, so, and I know there's a lot going on, but when, when, when that is feasible, could we please get that information so we can make some educated, thank you. Alright, it's been moved and seconded for consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two eighty, an ordinance declaring a two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer K-nine unit to be surplus property and disposal of said property by donation and authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Village of Diverne for its police department for donation of said property for the Springfield Police Department. Move for consent.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two eighty-one, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the payment in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars to Randy Pickett, owner of the former Shays Gas Station for operations from July through January first twenty twenty-seven for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on this matter?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath?
Uh, Director, where, is this money coming out of your fund?
Yep, this will come out of the Bureau's fund, and it'll go for, help those operations. You know, as you know, we opened the grounds to Shays Gas Station just a couple months ago. We'll, we'll keep those open through the Route sixty-six and ten in twenty twenty-six.
What operation do they have there? The gates are closed?
No, they're not, they're open, open twenty-four seven.
So they're, are we paying for personnel to work there, or what are we doing with the men?
No, no personnel, just to get on the grounds, but there's still liability insurance, there's grounds maintenance, there's internet service now to run the security system that was installed. Again, all the improvements made were by a DCO Route sixty-six no match grant.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing no, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two eighty-two, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of appropriation authority in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars from the Office of Budget and Management expense budget line fifteen oh seven into expense line twelve thirty-two for the Office of Budget and Management. Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, Alderwoman Conley, sorry.
Thank you, no apologies, thank you Chair. I was just wondering, I know we have someone from our IT here to, to speak to what's gonna happen with these improvements, or... Are you the next, did I, did I look at something without my reading glasses on? Okay, no, this is, sorry, this, you guys are the next one, this is the, the broadcast. I just want to be real clear, and I apologize, no reading glasses makes me really slow. We've gotten a lot of regular complaints about the ability of residents to follow our council meetings with appropriate audio, with the video coming through, with our, being able to broadcast. This is a, the beginning of an investment to make sure that, to show our commitment that we do want to make sure that people can watch these meetings and, and follow them and, and hear and see everything, so I'm excited to see this, this move forward, thank you Chair.
Thank you, and I-
Thinking of seeing, I'll put my reading glasses on.
I'll follow up, but I think we all support good communication with our citizens, and, you know, I've told Ms. Ms. Wilson that anything they need further, you know, bring it to us, we want to get this fixed and, and done the right way, technology these days is a little different, so... Uh, it's been moved and seconded for consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two eighty-three, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal for RFP CS twenty-five dash eighteen and execution of an agreement with Scott Cox for sale of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located at twenty-three forty South Fifth Street in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the Office of Budget and Management. Move for consent. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, is there any discussion on this matter?
There is, yeah, thank you.
Alderwoman Nottriano?
Um, okay, so I have some questions about the parcel, I don't know who can field those. Um, so, the neighbor to this house in our rehabbing and selling of it has had a lot of problems with people entering her property because there is no driveway for this house, and there is no access through the alley that I could see. Um, so, I'm a little bit concerned about how... I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we might be creating, you know, some ongoing issues between neighbors.
I believe there's, I'll have to check, I think there's access through the alley, I thought there was, but I'll have to verify that.
Yeah.
It's a legal parcel that was, that I mean, purchased, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, another question that I have or think is weird is the parcel that is up against Fifth Street is owned by the city, and it extends to this house's front yard?
I don't know, say, repeat that.
So, basically, we have a, a larger than usual right-of-way in front of, um, now, gosh, I can't remember the twenty-three thirty-something and this house, um, yeah, twenty-three thirty-three and twenty-three forty. The city has a unusually large right-of-way, and, um, like I said, if you look on the parcel viewer, the driveway for those two houses, or the driveway in the middle of those two houses is completely owned by the residents in the north. And so, uh, we've had people cutting the grass over there, going in to this person's driveway. We've talked about this, this is the, the house that, um, you know, city employees have been in her driveway. Um, I'm just afraid that it's not accessible as is now, and I would be wondering, like, why? I, I don't know, I just think we might have some problems.
With dislocation?
Yeah, like, as it is.
Okay, I have to look at that.
Were you able to see if there's a alley access?
I can't see it.
So it looks like, um, whatever alley there was back there may have been curtailed by the rail work.
Yep, exactly what happened.
I mean, do you have any idea, like, are they gonna demo this? Like, what are they doing with this land?
Uh, no, his intention is to, to rehab the house and then probably sell it for, you know.
We, we can check the, the engineering and the plating that's changed and, um, report back to you.
Okay, let's put this on debate. Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the, the debate agenda? Is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four two eighty-four, an ordinance to accept and execute a sixty-month professional services agreement with Comcast Business to establish a fiber network dedicated to the city of Springfield Department of Communications for live broadcasts for an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for the Office of Budget and Management. Motion for consent?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, Alderwoman, okay, uh, is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Twenty twenty-four two eighty-five, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposal for RFP CS twenty-five dash seventeen and execution of an agreement with Paul and Jennifer Gabris for the sale of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located at twenty-five oh one South Fourth Street in an amount of sixty-five thousand ninety-nine dollars for the Office of Budget and Management.
Motion for consent?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent, any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Twenty twenty-four two eighty-six, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposals under RFP CS twenty-five dash thirteen, CS twenty-five dash fourteen, CS twenty-five dash fifteen, CS twenty-five dash sixteen, and CS twenty-five dash nineteen, an execution of agreements with William Moore for sale of city-owned property consisting of seven parcels for a collective amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the Office of Budget and Management.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Second.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded for-
I have a discussion.
Sure, Alderman, Alderwoman, Nottriano?
We can, I mean, we can vote if that's in order.
What if we can consent or debate?
I don't know yet.
Go ahead with your discussion.
Okay. Um, okay, so, uh, Director, again, question for you. Um, I was unable to tell based on, um, the documents. Uh, so, this is a lot of parcels for one person? Do, do you have an idea, is this also gonna be a, a rehabbing the houses?
Yeah, he, his intention is to rehab the houses, and, uh, he, uh, he, uh, his stated plan is to rent these houses, but yeah, his plan is, is, uh, stated plan is to rehab all the houses.
Okay.
Yeah, he will have to, he will have to invest, uh, the, the houses are in a state of somewhat state of disrepair as they have been inhabited by, um, and, or have been, uh, various interiors have been pulled out, and he will have to put in new HVACs, wiring, he'll have to bring them up to codes, so, yeah, but, uh-
And I've had, uh, a few former residents of these houses express serious concern about, um, structural stability, now, I can't verify, uh, that or what have you. But just wanting to, I mean, I, I guess we did our walkthrough and, and that's all-
Uh, we, we posted these, we, we had an open house for, for these, these were, these were posted for six weeks. Anybody had the ability to do a walkthrough, they are being sold on an, you know, as-is basis, so, they have done a walkthrough.
And we're not making any guarantees about their habitability?
We are not making any guarantees.
Very good.
And they will have to pull permits for any, any, uh, any improvements that they do.
Mm-hmm. Um, and with this bid, did the person, um, does the person have, like, a company, or?
Uh, yeah, I believe he's a businessman, he has, uh, I don't know if he has a company. He, uh, he has other properties within Springfield, so, yeah.
And do you know his, uh, full name?
Uh, William?
Moore.
Uh, we just have William Moore.
Okay.
Is what I have, yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, yeah. Motion for debate?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate, there's further discussion, Alderman Redpath?
Hold behind my eyes first.
Oh, I'm, I apologize, Henauer?
Alright, Director, thank, thank you for, uh, we haven't seen this many parcels being sold at one time in, in eight years, and I, I, nine years I've been up here. Um, we need, what do we got, about two, two or three hundred left?
Oh, well, yeah, we have a lot, well-
I, I mean, I'm not, I, it's, it's kinda joking, but it, you know, we gotta get these off so we can start getting taxes on it, and we gotta, that, these are eight properties, or counting the other ones, that we don't have to mow anymore, and, uh, so, you're, you're in a, you're in a good starting position.
These are properties with structures on it.
We just got a couple, couple, two, three hundred bucks to, to get sold, and, and let's get those on, out of, off the books too, so, thank you.
Alderman Redpath?
So, these properties are things that we looked at in our working group, and basically, we decided to get these things back on the tax rolls by getting rid of them. They're being sold with the, with the consent and advice from legal counsel that we put these out with no retribution back to the city of Springfield. They know that they were sold because there were structural problems, and they gotta deal with it, but they gotta bring these things up to code, and they will be, our inspectors will be out there watching the whole process to make sure they do it, and, uh, that's, that's the point. As far as the, the rest of the, of the properties that you're talking about, we're working on those. I know there's a, we're getting ready to do an RFP on, on demolition of forty-five, and we're gonna have another forty-five coming, I believe, at the end of August, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we're, we're moving in the right direction. It's a long process because, you know, they have to go to con- commendation, uh, co- sorry. They have to, they're, they have to be condemned and then go through the court process, and, um, so, that takes a lot of time, and Katia from the legal department's working her tail off to get those things moving, because we want them back on the, the rolls, and if people want these properties, they're for sale, and we want to get them off our hands, and we want to put them back in, on the tax rolls so we can stop mowing them and, and cleaning them up all the time, so, that's the whole idea. Thank you.
No problem. Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, and thank you, um, Alderman Redpath for that, uh, clarification, because when we're selling this many to one person, and they come in and they say they want to buy it, we're hoping that we don't run into issues with have us still having to go out there and cut the grass because they haven't done it, uh, is anybody open, even out-of-state landlords coming in to buy these type of properties, like Ralph said, we got about two hundred more left? I'm asking you from the, is this a committee that you own, when you said that's what you-
We're, we're a working group for Mayor Busher, we work on, on these kind of issues, contractual compliance stuff.
So is there any type of, um, requirements when they come in to purchase this, or if they got the money, they just can?
Well, they, they set up the criteria based on the RFPs, and, uh, and then legal works through that whole process with our purchasing, uh, group.
I get that part, I guess maybe I'm not asking a deep enough part of the question. So when they purchase it, for example, I know in my neighborhood, you had to do a scope of work so we know that you're actually gonna complete the project, and you just don't start it, and then you stop for about a year or two years. So do we have something that shows us that they're gonna complete it, so we don't have, it doesn't have to come back to us for us to start writing them violations over and over?
Uh, well, we don't have any closing documents to say that, no. I mean, he's a low, he is a spring, uh, Sangamon County business, so-
Which is good, so, but are out-of-state landlords that may get their hands on something like this and come in and buy up maybe fifty at one time? We just want to make sure we don't touch that problem again neither.
Well, we would bring, we would have to bring that to you all to, to approve, so, I mean, yeah.
Just double checking, but thank you.
We got our eyes open for that.
Okay, I'm just making sure, because this is something that can be enticing for people who are out-of-state looking at prices being that low, and maybe buy ten or twenty, and then we run into it.
Yeah, they're gonna buy a hotel or something, but not be able to run it.
No further discussion from you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman Carlson?
Yeah, follow up with Alderwoman Purchase. I assume these properties are as-is, so, they're not coming back on us for anything, right? I mean, it's in the contract, as-is, and buyer beware, and that's it?
Yeah, the language within the RFP states, yeah.
Alderwoman Nottriano?
Thank you Chair, and I, I would just like to further explain my concern here. Uh, Alderwoman Purchase jogged my memory, I have another house on Walnut that had been vacant for several years, and we finally worked through the legal process, and, um, now I can't remember who sold it, per, maybe the person who bought it for taxes, but currently, that house is owned by someone out-of-state who is like a mortgage speculator or something like that, an individual, like, an individual person. So, um, I'm, I'm just really worried that houses in Ward Six are gonna be bought up because they're good investment opportunities to folks from the outside with a lot of money. Um, so that's my, my main concern. Thank you.
No problem, no problem. Alderman Henauer?
I'm sorry to go back to it, I just have a question for Corporation Counsel. Um, we really can't, can't stop, when we do an RFP, we really can't stop someone from out-of-state purchasing our, our property, can we? If, if we do-
Not, not unless there's-
Doesn't that put us in kind of a, uh, kind of a-
Not unless there's good cause, we have the ability to reject a bid if we have reason to believe it's not in the best interest of the city, but we would need to show, for example, a history of violations, uh, outstanding violations, those type of things, if we have a landlord that we know, um, has had issues in the past, then we can use that as an opportunity to reject a bid, but if we have no reasonable, we can't act arbitrarily or capriciously in denying a bid.
Right. I, and the only reason why I say that is, you know, I know we've had plenty of problems with out-of-state landlords that, that, um, well, they bought property not through the city, and they've, they've not lived up to their bargain of- and they've, they've not lived up to their bargain of keeping it up. But if we can get somebody to come in and buy these, some of these, we got a lot of empty lots, things like that. And if someone wants to come in and they got a plan for it, I, I, you know, we got to be careful about saying no because you don't live in the city or you don't live in the state, we, you know, we're going to prevent you from doing that. I, I think that we really need to get these lots, these vacant lots, the vacant houses down. Any property, we, we shouldn't be in the property business except for the office buildings and things like that. And, and, you know, I have not seen the properties, the number of properties that we have go down since I've been here. They just continue to go up. And what that does is that takes a tax, you know, that, we don't get taxes on it and then we have to maintain the property. And, you know, so, I, I just, I just want to caution, caution people that we got to be careful about saying, we don't want, you know, we, we want to limit what we're doing. That, that's one of the reasons why we can't sell a lot of these properties now. In the past, we put such strict limitations on what people can do to them, do with them, that nobody wants to buy them. They won't even buy them for, for five hundred bucks, you know? So, anyway, thank you.
Call the question.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. So, Alderman Hanauer, I do understand what you're saying. And some of these properties are within our wards that we have to look at. And if somebody start, we, we're finding people starting a project but not completing it. So, then it still becomes a eyesore. We're still having to do violations. We're still having to run out and go and check on the work that they're doing. I'm just asking, is there some type of mechanism? And we all know, I live in Enos Park, so when you came and purchased a home, they would ask you, do you have the financing to continue it and not try to run in here and ask us for money once you run out? So, I'm just making sure to be proactive before we hit that, that stump in the road. And I'm praying that we don't. And I'm praying that we don't have to go and cut their grass neither for them if they get too many and they don't keep up with it.
Alderman Conley.
Thank, thank you, Chair. And I just wanted, I just checked since we've got it in front of us. But the proposal requirements for all of these purchases include the proposed purchase price, a description of the proposed use, reuse of the property, redevelopment budget, and name, address, and telephone number of the contact person for the bidder. So, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Alderman. We, we definitely want to see, and I think there may be a little more detail that's, and that's maybe part of the review process. But yes, show us what you want to do, show us you have the money for it too.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Again, Washington Street is another situation of a project where the redevelopment plan, and that was not a, it's not a, that was a private deal, that wasn't the city's property. Yeah, the plan wasn't great and the budget wasn't there. And now my residents are dealing with the fallout from that. So, we have to balance that, we have to balance both of those things. But we definitely want to make sure that competent and, and professional, responsible bids are encouraged and, and really sought after. So, I do appreciate it because I know you, you go through more work than what we, we see in reviewing these bids. So, just thank you for including those requirements.
Alderman Nochano.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Conley, for bringing that up. I was under the impression that people weren't doing redevelopment agreements with these. But if you have that information that the bidders submitted, is there any reason that you would not be able to share that with council?
Well, there's, I don't think there's a redevelopment agreement. I mean.
What did you say?
This is redevelopment budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we're selling, we're giving it to them, they're not getting money from us, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can share what, yeah, I can, I can share what they, what he intends to spend on each property.
Yeah, I think that.
Because each one ended, yeah, each one indicated, yeah, what they intend to, you know? I mean, they also, you know, they intend, you know, they also say whatever's necessary to bring it up to code, to get it up to, you know? And then they estimate what they think it would be, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide that.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that before we vote. Thank you.
So, I'll, I'll finish up by just saying that I think it is important, I agree with what, what's been said. It is important to get some of these houses off the tax roll. For my particular ward, I was rather nice to renters, but, and homeowners, local people getting a chance to really do that. But all in all, you know, it's been moved and seconded for debate. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Eyes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, two eighty-seven, a resolution for a destination of portions of Jackson Street as Harry H. Marshall Way and BLM SPI Way and a portion of Eleventh Street as Reconciliation Way.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Mr. Chair, there's a, I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposed amendment number one.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt amendment number one. Mr. Murdock.
So, amendment number one changes the BLM SPI Way to Black Lives Matter SPI Way.
Thank you, sir. You know, when we put up this sign, it was four years ago. We, we, we had the tragic murder of George Floyd and the year anniversary of a, of a very, very peaceful protest where, you know, three thousand people were in the streets peacefully in our, in our community. And here we now, or about four years ago, four, four years ago, to this day, we, we're going to put this sign back up. And, and now, you know, with this ordinance, all three of these signs will, will stay. Harry Marshall was one of the first, if not the first, black US Marshal in the United States, right here from Springfield. So, I guess I'm saying this, that we're not just throwing up honorary signs or signs for no reason. These are very significant matters that we want to recognize throughout our city. So, I appreciate everyone's support in, in this, in this manner. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
I'd like to be a cosponsor, please.
Yeah, actually, that was, that's why I buzzed in, Chair, if I could be added as a cosponsor.
Same.
Same.
Probably everybody.
Everybody.
Let's go, you got it?
Yep.
All right, let's go, we'll make sure everyone's added. I appreciate everyone. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Alderman Conley.
You already got me, thank you, sir.
Already got you, all right, I'm just making sure now.
Thank you, sir.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for consent.
You want to take a vote on the amendment first?
Yes, yes. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Motion for consent?
Second, eyes amended.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Now, we will roll on to unfinished business. Anyone, anyone?
Yeah, all right.
Why are you looking at me?
I should have moved on. Alderman Williams.
You should have.
No.
So, I'm trying to ask somebody, I guess Corporate Counsel, when we will hear from to continue. It's been a while. And I thought when we last spoke with them, they would give us updates periodically on what's going on with their work with the homeless. And I haven't seen Josh here or, or any kind of update recently.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll follow up and see, and see when they're available and see if I can get counsel and update.
Yeah, I, I think we need an update because I see a surge of, again, I brought this up at our unfinished business a couple of weeks ago. But I still had the folks sleeping in front of the CVSs and the dollar stores and all of this. And I know there's not much the law allows us to do, but I want to know what they are at least attempting to do. So, that's why I would like to see an update coming from them on, you know, their actions. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I would like to take this moment to invite people out to the, the ribbon cutting and the open house for Fire Station Thirteen ribbon cutting, August first at ten AM. And then the, this Saturday from nine to noon will be an open house at the new fire station at Spalding Orchard Road and Veterans Parkway. So, we look, we're excited about it and we look forward to seeing people out there. Thank you.
I'll energize.
You don't got, you got new business? Any, any, anyone else for old business? Time for new business.
Please.
Alderman Rockford.
Yes.
Director Metzger. On our current city webpage, there's a, yeah, on the open government tab, is there any way to get this, the updated employee salary report updated? Last one is twenty twenty-two?
I know that the Director of Human Resources.
Human Resources, I'm sorry.
We didn't notice because we had pulled one and realized there had been a year missed. So.
Very good.
We have fixed that and we're working to get it posted. And then we're going to change a little bit, but that's coming later.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And another, another question for Direct, the Director Metzger. On this, when, when city vehicles have gotten redlined in the past and they have gone to city auctions, okay? Is there a list of names and people that we can, that we're, we can look up to see who purchased these vehi- these vehicles?
They are. They are.
In the past?
They are to be surplus through purchasing. And purchasing uses an online auction company. So, that information would be with the online auction company. And we are looking into that particular matter right now.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. This Thursday is the final music on the Y Block. And the City of Springfield will be doing fireworks. It's my night to host, but I won't be there. So, I encourage all of my colleagues to go out for me too and enjoy it. And the weather should be nice too as well. As well as we have the roundup coming here to our city. It will be thousands of bikes here in the City of Springfield. We'll have a good economic impact here. I remember when they came before, I think we ran out of toilet paper from Sam's, Walmart, Antard. So. Yes, we will be doing very well. But make sure you all go out and enjoy some of the bikes on the scene and the food and their gear. And I'm excited to see them come to Springfield again. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Now, we, I'm very excited for all of those things that you mentioned. And I can't represent you, but I need a pair of those glasses, but, um, all right.
I'd like to see that.
Me too, I might get him a pair while I'm gone.
Mr. Clerk, now it's time for citizens who have requested to address this committee.
All right. Tony Sanders.
I currently have a property at eighteen twenty-five homes. And the neighbors for umpteen years have done no maintenance at all. Last June, when our storms blew through, a limb came down on the roof. It's still up there with a tarp. I've talked to the zone manager and the inspector. The house, it looks like Herman Munster's house. It's just dilapidated. They've sensed that it's abandoned. So, we have raccoons and pigeons and, you know, I know we can't control the road problems, but once you get raccoons in the neighborhood, it's a bad deal. There's been multiple write-ups and fines, but they never pay a fine. I see they get, they get fined, but they must do just a little bit to fix it. And, I mean, this has been going on for, I had two junk cars in the backyard that hadn't moved for five years. And that took two years to get those removed. I'm just trying, I'm trying to sell my property next door, but no one wants to invest in, you know, with something like this. And I have been told that it's illegal. But I've also been told that legal is so short-staffed and they're so backed up. I'm just wondering what, as a taxpayer citizen, I can do to keep on this. I know, Jennifer, I've sent her pictures that, you know, it's just, it's a horrible house and a wonderful neighborhood. And it's just bringing everybody's property value down. I just don't know what else, you know, besides calling in, I do it online, complaint, all. I've got eight or ten neighbors that have jumped on board because it's basically just, you know, they're, no one's living there. No one's going to do anything with it. And I just want to know if the nuisance ordinance would come into play in this?
If, if, if I may, can I have our Corporation Counsel answer a few of your questions?
Yes, please.
So, are, are, we are pursuing this case. Our next court date is August fourteenth. So, we're, we're still perfu- pursuing fines and abatement. And, and, yeah, we're, we're trying to get it taken care of as well.
Okay, am I able to attend that, that meeting or that court?
Yes, and I'm happy to speak with you after the meeting. And, and you wouldn't be able to participate in it, but it's open to the public. So, so I'm happy to get you, get you the location and time after this meeting.
Okay. I mean, am I, are we looking at another two years to get, to get something done? At least two years?
So, hopefully not. We're, we're trying to improve the times.
I mean, if it's a staffing problem with legal, that's what I've been told, that legal's so backed up because of a staffing issue, that they can't keep the, you know, they hired somebody and he was there two weeks. Now, they're back to where they're short-staffed.
Not, not, not to get into the inner workings of, of my department, but we've lost a couple attorneys over the past couple of months. We've got one coming on board in two weeks and I've got interviews all afternoon on Thursday. So, I'm trying to get us fully staffed. That's no excuse, it should not take two years. We, we just recently got a new referral on this case and we're trying to move it as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Director Fuchs.
Thank you.
No problem.
I would also like to add that a joint combined inspection is being scheduled for this property. Of course, we have to send a letter to the homeowner and they have to agree to a time. A joint inspection includes all of our inspectors, that would be an electrical inspector, a plumbing inspector, a building inspector, a mechanical inspector, as well as fire safety. So, that's, that's in the works, be scheduled.
Dave, you want this? Director, I just wanted to make sure you were finished, Director.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention the joint combined.
Okay. Can I do this, can I go on order on the screen? I don't want to disrespect, I think.
Oh, I have not even looked at the screen.
It's all good, it's all good. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so I made my comment because I just feel, again, this is one of those situations that our counsel has failed the citizens. We won't take action to do anything about these kind of property situations. We have a working group dealing with contracts. We needed something happening with these houses. I have twelve of these. He's gone and he ain't hearing me. But I have twelve of these in my ward. You're getting ready, send a letter to who, Director? Not that this is your fault, to who? She, he just told you that this place, no one lives there. It's been empty, it's been abandoned. And this is the stuff we do, Corporate Counsel, that gets to me. Because we say it's illegal and we played it sending out letters, knowing the letter we sent it out ain't going to get answered, but we're going to let all this time go by and the citizens just suffer or ma- or make it look like the console and the city don't care and we don't do. Our process is horrible. Our process is horrible when it comes to dead people that have these houses, people in jail who have these houses. And I don't even know who's behind this. They may be dead or they may be in jail or just don't care. But we always tell our citizens, but we got to first give them time. So, I got to send this information out, out into the atmosphere. And then when it don't get responded sixty days later, then maybe we go to the next step. And that's why I said about two years, yeah, before that. Because I got houses over ten years, and I'm upset, yep, over ten years in this city. And we won't do nothing about it because it's illegal, is what they say. That's the, the term they use to cover it. But it's somewhere in our bad process. And all I'm asking the counsel is, we have to take a look at this and try to fix it to make it work for those categories of people. If they're dead, they can't talk to you. Writing them letters is going to do no good. The state, I, I, I take my time, go down there. Some things they'll talk to me about, most things they won't. Because it's somebody's private business and estate and all that. I don't care. I'm at a point to where we have to put something in place that empowers us to do something a lot quicker than these years. I didn't get a chance to ask him exactly how many years. But when he said years, it, it, it got my attention. There's a, I got a feeling that only the people that come forward are ready to sell their homes to take action are coming to tell us about this. I got a feeling all the wards have them. And it's a lot more than what we would want to know about. So, all I'm saying is we got to fix that process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I may, Alderman?
Yes.
Thomas Hamilton is listed as. Thomas Hamilton is listed as the owner of the property. The power is still turned on and the bill is minimal, but it's still being paid.
Is he sitting in Springfield though?
Uh, I don't have his address right here, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So, and, and Corporation Council, I'm going to have you speak, but let me, let me have them because they'll probably have something for you to respond to as well. Is that all right with you, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, Alderman Purchase?
Thank you Chair. So Roy, I share your frustration, but our working group, this is the same thing I brought up with the house next door, that it's been empty for over five and a half years now and we just turned the water off. So it's been empty all that time, hasn't been touched. And this is what we're running into, where people still paying the bills, but no work is being done with all the violations on it. So we're working on something for that, Alderman Williams. The second thing is I had, I'm sure everybody's familiar with Lincoln Park on Fourth Street. It's a big, huge historical house that was really nice and it was getting ready to be on the, the demo list and they had it as a bid in breakfast. It was 10 times worse than this and we did 10 truckloads to clean up the yard and remove everything out. Director Fuchs, this was right before you got here or maybe, maybe a year before you got here. But we were able to go out and clean up that property since we knew no one lived in it, but it was completely trashed. And then the community just started coming to dump in it. So we cleaned it up and we built the, the individual for that. I'm not for sure if that's something that we can do on this because that house was also illegal too. And we were able to get it cleaned up and sell it to someone else. But it started to really just pile up and this was bringing me memories when I looked at the photos. Ladders, trucks, tires, bricks, it just became, it turned into a junkyard. So I don't know if that's something that you may be able to look at and see if we could still get that cleaned up so people don't start going to fly dump in it too, like it's a whole garbage area.
As I said, we'll have a joint inspection in there before long. And, and that is not only an exterior, but an interior inspection and we'll take a look at all of that.
Okay.
Alderman Carlson?
Thank you Chair. Director, and I have a home similar to this, but it's occupied. So for, for me, my question, and if you don't know, now you can answer tomorrow, but I mean, what sort of is the threshold? Because we know grass is like 10 inches, right? If we call in.
Eleven.
Eleven inches, right. So what is it if it just, as some residents call me, it's just a jungle in the backyard? I mean, what is the threshold on trees or weeds or anything like that? I mean, I just, I understand the grass situation, not this other stuff.
Well, if there's, if there's, how, how, what would be a good word? A brushiness, a, a, a forest. All you got to do is, is call me, give me the address and we'll, we'll get an inspection.
Is there something in code on that? Because I, I know we, we have the grass in code, is there something that sort of, you know, capsulizes this?
Yeah, we, we have a provision regarding weeds or overgrown brush.
We'll get Ralph started on roots.
Give me, give me the address, we'll get somebody out.
Alderman, Noceyano?
Thanks, just in time. So I have been working closely with my zone manager and the inspectors and I was under the impression that if it's in the backyard, like the reason we have the photos of the back of this house is because the inspector was afraid or couldn't get back there to see all of this. And so it's, it's been that way for a long time. So like what's our, if there's a fence, can we do anything about it?
Jump it, no. We, we can't trespass, right? So we have to, we either have to be allowed into the backyard in order to do an inspection or we have to do what's visible from the street. That, that, so we can't hop a fence and go start writing tickets.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Alderman Donlin?
Oh, I'm not done.
Oh, I apologize.
Sorry. Yeah, so another thing about this one is it looks like there should be a lot of violations. I know in terms of the chip paint, it looks like more than whatever percentage of, of the house needs to be painted, yada, yada. This is eighteen twenty-seven homes, right? And it's not on the cited properties list, like not for one single issue. So I go and tell the man who was just speaking, go check it out on the list, let's see where it's at. And I go there and there's nothing. And then I'm afraid, I'm like, oh my gosh, have we not caught this? You know?
There was actually an inspection, I believe in April, and paint was one of the things that was cited, as well as general deterioration of the garage in the rear.
Corporation Council, your thoughts?
Very good.
So I'm, I'm happy to talk on this particular property, but I know we have a, a couple older persons. But, but there was an inspection done in April. There was a referral that was sent to my office so we could pursue legal action. Now, we are trying to improve our process, but we still have to follow due process. So we have to give the owner notice. If the owner is deceased, they're not the owner anymore, but they have heirs, whether they be at law or through a will. And so we have to try to find those heirs. We have to try to find everybody who has a lien or an interest in the property, which would include any mortgages that are out there. Some of these have been sold for taxes. So there is a lot of legwork before we can, we can actually file these claims. And that's a lot of what we do, is tracking down not, not only the owner or who we know that lives there, but, but who actually has a legal interest in the property. So August fourteenth was the earliest that we could set this for a first appearance. We usually give 30 days notice. So from, from the time the inspection and the referral was done to the first appearance, you know, it, it takes a couple months. That's, that's pretty quick in the legal world, I know you don't like hearing that. But, but we see these, we, we have the pictures. Our inspectors did their job, they got it to legal and now we're going to do our job and, and pursue the court case. We just haven't gotten to our first appearance yet.
Thank you, sir. So we'll go Alderman Donlin, Alderman Conley and back to Williams and we will wrap up this conversation.
Mr. Chair, I have a, a topic for the Director, but it's not directly this one. So if Alderman Williams has a follow-up, I would suggest that.
Alderman Conley, do you have something on this topic?
I do, but I think Alderman Noceyano had a follow-up comment, I don't know.
Yeah, I ju, I just am trying to figure out why it's not on the cited properties website.
They haven't been found in violation yet. It's only been a referral to us, one, one referral.
Okay, explain that to me.
So our inspectors have said, we think this is a violation. They have an opportunity to present a defense. So we have one court case that has come to us. So, so they still have the opportunity to say, no, this isn't a violation, here's why. And I know you're looking at it and saying, this is a violation, but we have to give them due process. And that's not something that, you know, we have up here, it's guaranteed by the Constitution. So we can't just start putting property, we have strict criteria for that list. And we can't just start putting any property on there because then a homeowner could unfairly be put on there if, if we made a mistake.
Absolutely, no doubt. And I do not want to step on anyone's due process, but I just know that I've called this in prior to April. Like, I, I just can't believe that we don't have violations like from the past 24 months. But I, I'll suspend my disbelief, thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is going order, Alderman Donlin?
Director, while you're up there, I know we've had recent, as recent as this morning and, and this afternoon, storms that have taken down quite a number of trees again. I've been asked if we are going to have a special branch pickup for the storm-related branches that are throughout the city. I know the, the schedule, regular schedule starts next week if I recall correctly, so I just wanted to ask.
We actually had 25 calls out this morning with the storm that we had this morning, so we were picking those up. When I left the office, we were still getting calls on the storm from this afternoon. The, the group that picks up the, the branches is, is scheduled to start early, they'll start this week. I don't know if it'll be tomorrow or Thursday, but.
So if we have those storm branches down, turn them in right away?
Right, get, get them out to the, right away.
Thank you Director.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you Chair. And Director Alderman Donlin, got my first question because we did talk about this just last week at that Neighborhood Association meeting. I want everyone to know, I am not speaking in defense of the kind of yard that are in these pictures right here. But I do want to make sure we clarify right, real quickly, because I've also had a similar situation with beauty being in the eye of the beholder when it comes to landscaping. And that is something that I'm working on as an, as an ordinance to bring forward because there are people who do native landscaping and, and more natural habitats that may look to the untrained eye like that's weeds, that's something I see by the side of the road or that I don't understand why this is so big. So we, we, I just want to make sure that we, and again, not defending this. No, no, good, no, this, this right here, I, I get due process, I also get hot mess. And, and this has, this has that flavor, definitely. But just, you know, we get complaints about a lot of things and as someone, I, I have a degree in plant biology and it's very hard to find a good definition of what is a weed. You know, their, their usefulness is, every plant has different degrees of usefulness to one of God's creatures or another. They're not all our favorite creatures. I, I could do without mosquitoes. But I just, so just, just to be clear, I think we, we need to make sure that when someone calls in and just says, hey, there are a lot of trees in the backyard, we're also trying to encourage more trees. And we're trying to encourage, you know, native planting can have a really specific and important place in our community. So, and I know we're, we're working on something for that and don't hold your breath because I've not been pushing it as fast as I, I wanted to, but we'll, I do want to have something come forward so that we can have more of a conversation about what does it look like? What is the difference between hot mess, native landscaping and, and people bringing in more of, you know, that, that kind of a look to their neighborhoods? And how do we educate people in, in understanding and having a discerning eye to see the difference? So again, because I know, I know, I saw Alderman Purchase, I think your eyebrows went, went halfway through. Not defending this yard, but I do want to make sure that we, we keep that in mind too. And Director, also thank you for your willingness to get those branch guys out as soon as possible. We have, I think, some more weather planned or some more, some more weather coming that could easily keep your branch crew very busy. And I think as we're, I mean realistically, we are looking at the beginning of budget season very soon. And again, I would encourage Public Works to, you know, consider what sort of options should this council be talking about when we get into our actual budget hearings? When it comes to things like how much money do we allocate to these branch crews? Do we have enough of, we've gone, I mean, we've doubled the cycle, right? We used to have two collections a year, we've gone to four. That is not enough. We're seeing these storms coming through, we're seeing, and I remember one time after the deration, you said there are branches that were, that were weakened in this storm and we're going to continue to see them coming down. That has not stopped. So I think we just, as you put together your budget for next year, I do ask that you have a consideration for what should we as a council be considering in terms of what cost it is to the city to make sure that we have a healthy and robust branch collection system in addition to our other yard waste systems? Not everyone has a truck to be able to get branches down to, you know, to the free drop-off. Not everyone has that access or time. And I think it's something that we need to, in context of our budget, have a more detailed discussion this, in January, February.
Thank you Alderman, and you're absolutely right about the, the weather for the rest of this week. We have a chance of thunderstorms with high winds and possible tornadoes all the way through, I think Saturday, with hot, hot temperatures and.
Yes, and we're combining that with some really outrageous heat indices. So we do want to make sure that we're staying, again, as a reminder to everyone, stay hydrated, know the difference between being hot and being overheated, especially for your crews who are outside dealing with all of this. So please send our appreciation to them for their work.
Alderman Williams finishes us out on this topic and we're going to move on.
I, I want to take us back and, and I appreciate that because they need more money and they're going to need it in these areas of what we're asking. But I want to still make sure clear, this is not beating up on anybody. I truly understand your role and what your inspectors do and how that works. And the zone managers have been great helping and assisting me. I understand your role. But while everybody's doing their role, you know, you doing inspections and getting things done, you doing the letter writing. In the middle of all this, some things just still need to happen. Maintenance still needs to be getting done. Not it's illegal, so it's building and growing and getting raggedier. Maintenance still has to be maintained, even if the person's dead, even if you're looking for the relatives or going through whatever that process is. And that's where I'm at on this. The weak part of our process is we don't maintain grass that we know the person isn't living. The house is there, so every six months, cut it or something. Don't let it get so horrible is all I'm saying. So the, the zone managers agree with me and my, my 10 to 12 houses, that, that is a force. You can't even see the property because it's overgrown that bad. I'm, I'm not here to point fingers, I'm saying we should never let them get that bad. Somebody's got to be willing to spend the money and maintain it. Maybe it's because we don't know who's going to pay us back, that we don't want to cut. I don't know, but that's a bad process because they're, they're multiplying in War III. And all I'm saying is we got to still maintain them, especially when I tell you the person's dead and y'all verify the person's dead and we know it. In these cases, they're all gone. So yes, there's a legal process, I don't want to step on nobody's due process. But while you're figuring out your legal games, we still need to be maintaining it for the other neighbors that have a good house and that do care, that's all I'm saying. Not to be critical, but to say, hey, we got to put this piece in there that if you already know these houses exist, why get the air up of the, of the neighbors and the constituents to have to call and beg somebody to come out and do it? And I'm like, they know about that, we did this six months ago. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I, I share in the frustration, I won't even attempt to talk about War II and this. But I, I will say that Corporation Council works very, very hard to get rid of any barriers of, of trying to get to them faster. And, and we've worked at some things, I think we need to do some work at the State House and see what we can change to get to properties like this. There's been some discussion about these things at the State House and, and that's what we have to push at the city. When we get stuck, we, we got to go to somebody out and say, hey, this ain't working for our city, so let's move on. Ms. Clerk?
Yes, Vanessa Knox.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
December, I'm Vanessa Knox, I live here in Springfield, everyone knows me. December 18th, 2022 and July 6th of 2024. Springfield, of course, made international and national news with the deaths of Earl Moore and Sonya Massey. And there were some before them, but they have had the biggest amount of press, especially internationally. We all have a lens that we see our communities with. And the way we see our communities is based on how we were raised, what our experiences are. I'm worried about the lens here in Springfield. I'm disappointed when I sat at Sonya's funeral. I expected, I thought that there would be a whole section of the city officials, city council, county board members and things to, to sit at. We always have. Our beloved Sean, Alderman Gregory, Alderman, Alderman Keisha Purchase and Alderman, Alderman Roy Williams there. Mayor did come through and I know she's having some, some issues now. And I pray everything will work out for her. But as a city as a whole, to have this many people come from other countries, there was people from Canada, the Netherlands. Every single state almost in the country came and have been at the protests. And we did not have that many people from Springfield as city council, board members for the county and many, many other people that I feel should have been there. This made national news. I have seen quite a few of you, if not all of you, at ribbon cuttings, golfing events, all kinds of groundbreaking things and that's good and they should be celebrated. But our lens tells us what we're going to spend time with and says a lot about the person. We can't be at every event, I'm a community activist, I have to go to a lot of things and there's a lot of other ones in here as well. Every single night, we're going somewhere to do something with community. I say this to, to ring notice because it's an embarrassment that that many people can come from that many other countries and our own people here in Springfield cannot come to see something that puts us on the map on CNN. Even as horrifying as it is, Springfield is all over every news in the world. So I want that to be considered. This is a horrific event that keeps happening and keeps happening. I have a great relationship with Springfield PD here. I very much like the chief, I very much like the last one as well. They have made efforts to come and deal with. They have made efforts to come and deal with the community more. County and their position, they don't have as much uh community involvement. I don't know why SPD does so much and they don't. I'm asking for all of your help to make that better. We're gonna meet more with the sheriff. We regularly meet with uh Chief Scarlett. Those are very good meetings. We stay in touch. But we have to do something. We can't look at this and say, man, that's a shame. That girl died. Because what's gonna happen if we don't fix that? It's gonna happen to someone's house that really, really matters. So we have to stop it from the top down. We can, this is not just a law enforcement issue or EMS issue. This is an issue that is happening at doctors' offices, guys. People are being released from hospitals with 400 sugar levels and stuff. I know because I take them back and forth and I see it. They are being at doctor's appointments with the wrong medications, no one to help them, no social workers there, no one to help them. This is happening, crazy stuff is happening at law offices. It's happening at banks. It's happening all over. So it's still great harm. It's not an immediate death, but it's still great, long-lasting harm that is happening. So I ask you to look at your lens. I ask you to make as many ordinances and help us with laws to make this stop. Black people and brown people, people who are going through substance use issues, people that are homeless, people that have mental health issues, almost every single one of these huge cases have mental health issues. I ask that you not just tolerate them anymore and that you accept and love them like you do all the people in your lens.
Thank you, Ms. Vanessa.
James Johnson.
My name's not important. Jesus is important. Sonya Massey is more important. I want to start off saying my hat to uh Mr. Busher. Jesus speed on that. And I want to thank the ones that I saw on Sunday who showed up and showed their respect. I appreciate it. That showed me a lot. Now I want to talk about SPD. Even though SPD has done everything we asked them to do to not put us in this situation, the county did. And it's going, it's giving Springfield a black eye. Like she said, we all over the news, we everywhere. And this ain't good for you ones who attended Sunday. Or even was there or heard about it. It's not good. To the four or five that I seen on Sunday, I'm asking, because yesterday's meeting wasn't productive. Let me put a pin right here. There's a lot of angry people, me included. It's a lot of very hurt people and I ain't talking about just black. This goes across the board. We had some angry people in town that weren't from our community. So chairperson, I'm asking that we stop having meetings at churches. We got a southeast high school in Ward Two that has a brand new auditorium. We need to have our meetings there. We need a meeting so people can ventilate. Because if they don't get it out where people are hurt, they're gonna, it's gonna come out another way. And we really don't want that. Now I'm asking that when we put these meetings together to the police chief and the cities, uh the, the mayor's board, we want to sit down with the union. It don't have to be a big crowd, but some of us want to have a talk with the union. Because even though the spotlight is from county, there's some things, I don't know about your phone, chairperson, but mine's been blowing up with incidents with SPD. And I ain't even told the chief yet, but I probably gonna, when I leave this podium, I'm gonna get in his ear. But we need to talk about some things in the future for this not to happen again. Not just with the county, but any police department. Because every officer has, let me back up. We have some great officers out there. All of them aren't bad and we know this. But the one bad apple, and I don't care if it's on the east coast or west coast, it makes them all look bad, unfortunately, but it happens. So we need to sit down with the union. We need to have a talk. We need to sit down with the chief and the mayor. And we need to talk about what's going on with our police department. Because I know that there's some DUI cases that I'm not gonna bring up now. I know that there's some things being said and our women are being harassed. And I'm gonna say this again. There's some of us that's about to start standing up because y'all got our attention now. You see this wisdom right here?
Address the chair.
You see this wisdom right here? That mean we tired now. We had had enough and we standing up. And what I'm asking from the police chief and everybody around this horseshoe. Our women and our senior citizens are off limits from taking bullets to the face and being slammed to the ground. And I mean that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Melinda Greer.
I'm sorry. Hold for one sec. Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we definitely hear uh Mr. Johnson. And I just had lunch with our police union a week and a half ago. And we are going, me, Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory have been talking about this and we had conversations with Chief Scarlett to bring that type of group together. But James, when the US DOJ came in, and that's the Department of Justice, for anybody that don't know the acronym, when they came in, they had got word of what we were trying to do and asked for us to come together as one to do. So I understand your frustration when you said last night how it blew up at the end, that it wasn't, it wasn't good. We want to have, we're bringing the police union so we can be able to answer some questions back and forth. But again, we, we got to definitely have some respect and boundaries in that room. And I know the people in our community is gonna ensure that that happens so that we could talk back and forth to each other. Because when we doing yelling and we cussing in a church, that's not helping anybody. Yes, so I just want to take knowledge that we are working on that. It's a lot going on right now. It's a lot of different organizations trying to do things. And we're just trying to make sure we're doing it at the right time and getting people together. So it's not so many things going on at one time and people missing such an important moment that's really important to us up here too. We, we would like to speak with Corporation Council. We know we got an Open Meetings Act that we have to follow, so that's why we decided for us three. But I know that some of our other council members would like to be involved and we gonna defer over to Mordoc and make sure that we're okay or how we work that out. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we hear you and we hear the community and we're gonna make sure that it happens. And our, our police union is in full support of making sure we do this too with the community. I want to be real clear on that. Thank you.
Melinda Greer. Bradley Russell.
Name's Bradley Russell. Do I have to give my address? What, is that it? Okay. Uh, my thoughts and prayers to the mayor and her family. Cancer is an ugly disease. But I wanted to talk today about exactly what everyone else is worried about. There's been 229 black and brown people killed by police since George Floyd. And now 230. I find it appalling that CBS, CNN, all these other news agencies can do, 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 they can get the information about what this cop did. What he did in the army or military. I mean, he drove 100 mile, 110 miles an hour chasing somebody that he was already called off to, like, don't chase him. He hit a deer and totaled out the car. What if that was a person? Why, why isn't this, excuse me, why isn't this considered by Jack Campbell? When he hires these people, he can't figure this out, but CNN can? I mean, he said, well, there wasn't any, any of the other departments that had anything bad to say about him.
Make sure you're addressing the chair, Mr. Russell.
I'm sorry?
Just make sure you address me.
But I, this is for everybody. I mean, this is, I mean, across the nation, this is a problem. And now it's in our backyard. I just, I never thought that. I've lived here over 30 years. I've had a lot of interactions with the police around here and I've never had anything like that. I just, I, I, I don't know what the solution is, but I know that Campbell needs to go. Like, he messed up big time. And all he wants to say is, well, he didn't go by our training. He didn't go by anybody's training. He was at, uh, Kincaid or something like that and he quit because he, his hours, uh, he was part-time and his hours were cut. Wonder why that was? And then in Auburn, he was rough with uh drug busts and didn't do his reports right. And then when he was in Logan County, after seven months, they had a meeting with him. And the guy asked him straight up, how are you still here? After all you've done, how are you still here? You know what he said? I don't know. I mean, I just, and also, they were there the day before for this woman. They knew that she had issues. Like, was that not portrayed the next time when she called on July 6th? This man knew that. And what did he say when she, when they knocked, uh, when she came to the door and said, just a minute? He said, oh, she's probably hiding her drugs. He didn't look to see that she had some mental issues? And, and, and then on top of that, all he did was talk down to her and laugh. Like, laughing? Is that professional? Like, I just, it's saddened. I'm white, so I don't, I don't have as many worries with that because it's not, it's. I digress.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, it's just the uh, just security woman, after the Trump thing, she went to the, you know, Congress or whatever, had all that crap. Said she, excuse me, she said that uh she wasn't gonna resign and what did she do the next day? She resigned. And even she was smart enough to know, it's time to get out. Why isn't Campbell smart enough to figure that out? I don't know, man. I don't know, but I, I'm tired of seeing this. I'm, I'm tired of seeing my black and brown friends dying because they called the cops. And by the way, you know what Sonya stands for? She only needed your assistance. She only needed your assistance. She only needed you to look, make sure she was safe in her house. Not inside the house, outside the house. I don't know. I don't know, bro. I don't know what the solution is, but I know what the problem is and he needs to go. Hit the road, Jack.
Thank you for your comments. Alderman, Conley.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say first of all, the devastation of what that was um and, and the heartbreak that our community is experiencing, it, it's, I, I can't find the right words. James, I wanted to say something to you too. It's we, we have to be, this was not a Springfield police officer. And, and I think, you know, a lot of times they get, oh, these are the cops and so we put them all together, but but it was still a law enforcement officer in our neighborhood, in our community. I had sheriff's deputies um at a house in my, in my ward and I drove by and then I drove by again. And there were three women, women who about my age, sitting there watching because they also were concerned. And that is not, that is undermining the confidence of something that we have worked hard in this city to develop. And I will say, Chief Scarlett, you bring a level of professionalism and a high standard of expectation from your officers. We see that. I see that with all of the officers that I, I've been able to interact with, and yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my turn now. I know, Ms. Russell, I don't want to, and you're right. We've got to change our lens and we all have to be engaged and that means more conversations and more, more interactions, not less. We need to have that level of familiarity with each other so that we can stand up for each other. But I also want to say, I think that in, with Chief Scarlett, with the officers that report to him, we do some example of how this should be done. We saw that with Aaron Nichols. We got, I got anonymous post, copies of anonymous postings that that man had made that were horrible. And, and Chief, to your credit, you acted very quickly on that. The other thing that you did that, that, that gave me so much more confidence in, in, in how you run your department was that you reviewed his cases. You went back and looked at that. I, I will say, I think this is absolutely something that the county should be doing. Every case that that man touched should be reviewed. Because the red flags are, are astonishing. I don't have all the answers either. I, I do know that being part of the solution means that we don't alienate the people who are working, who are training constantly and encouraging that level of training and encourage that level of professionalism in a field that we do need. I've been that single woman who's called the police because I was very scared. I'm sorry. No, I'm, I understand my privilege. I understand where that privilege comes from and, and I was white and I had professional officers come to my house and I was made to feel safe again. And so we as a city need to grow from this. We need to build from this and we need to show that we value our professional law enforcement professionals, that these are men and women who stand there when we need them because we do sometimes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Purchase?
Thank you. I'm not gonna speak after every person, but what you just said, I appreciate it because like you just said, you are privileged by being white, so you, you felt you were treated different and there was a young lady who said that last night.
Yeah.
When she got up there, she said, I'm, I'm gonna say something nobody else is gonna say. I'm a white woman and we need to hold our white counterparts accountable.
Yep, we do.
And I thought that was like the most important thing that was said and I thank you for sitting in your seat and acknowledging that. The second thing, I, um, our police union um president reached out and I also spoke with Chief Scarlett about it. But as much and we, and I'm a very um big supporter of our Springfield Police Department. But there was a, a video that I saw that happened literally right after Sonya Massey's killing that one of our officers was at a window and a black man said, I'm scared and I, I don't want to get out of my car because I'm scared. And we laughed and said, huh, what are you scared of? So there, there are things, when I hear Mr. Johnson or when we were in the park on Sunday, me and Sean was together and people brought us videos or people were walking us, uh, walking up to us together saying, what are y'all gonna do to make us have more trust with the Springfield Police Department? And we keep reiterating that we don't want to have a black eye on SPD because this was a. a county issue, but like you said, policing is all over our community. So right now, the fingers are just being pointed at everyone, but what we can do is continue to be an example, lead and be proactive, and there's gonna be some uncomfortable conversations because seeing that video after this happened, we gotta have a little bit of compassion, too. I don't care who's in the wrong, how it goes, but when someone says that they're scared, the reaction that we give back in our badge and in our uniform needs to have a little bit of compassion, too, to say, I understand where you're coming from.
A lot.
And acknowledge it. So I'm, I'm a little upset about that, and I've acknowledged it with our union, so that's why I, I'm happy to have that conversation with our community so that we can try to rebuild that trust again.
And, and Alderwoman, I, I thank you for that. There, these are not easy conversations, and we need to be very open and honest about. It's difficult. I mean, there's a level of guilt that goes along with that, too, and then there's a level of, of distance sometimes.
And what you said...
We need to walk a mile in, in a lot of different shoes, and we need to use a lot of different lenses, and, and I, I just want to say, and I, you stepped away from that mic very quickly.
Yes.
Thank you for what you said to, tonight, too. Thank you for, for being honest and open with us.
Thank you.
It's really hard for me and Roy and Sean, because when we're in the community, we're black, so we're the first people that they approach to ask, why they not doing this? Why y'all not doing this? No matter how hard we working, we still get yelled at. It's like, you damn if you do, damn if you don't. So when we see our colleagues coming out, you all coming out to support and saying what you just said, people have to respect it and acknowledge it. So again, I thank you for saying that, too, as well.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Mrs. Anupama Parachuri.
You got that? Let's go.
I can't say your last name, still.
Oh, I've heard so many different. Good evening.
Say close.
My name is Anupama Parachuri, and I live in Ward Seven. I am here to demand that the City of Springfield immediately begin developing and implementing thorough, genuine police reform. What happened to Sonia Massey involved Sangamon County, but Springfield PD has its own similar issues. Nick Renfro had a history of excessive force and substance abuse. Aaron Nichols, who was mentioned just now, is a literal neo-Nazi. Rage Against the Machine once said, "Some of those that work forces are the same that burn crosses." You can brush off Sonia's murder as something done by the county, but it's only a matter of time before SPD turns its current escalation tactics into another loss of life. As I said the last time I was up here, honorary street signs, while important, are not the end. You don't have to wait for the National George Floyd Act to pass before doing something locally, and by act, I don't mean the fear mongering by Southern View Police Department or the state posting extra cops outside of the state museum. Yes, hiring practices here were recently updated, and yet, SPD continues to harass black drivers and needlessly escalate situations with citizens, as captured on video. The city should create a focused committee to develop and implement meaningful reforms. This committee should have enough participants to ensure meetings are open to the public rather than closed-door executive sessions. This committee should engage with community leaders and provide regular public updates to hold itself accountable. Don't treat it the way you've been treating the Housing Committee. And of course, all council members should be present for this process, physically and with their words. Some elected officials in this room have been at the rallies and community sessions. They've acknowledged the tragedy on social media. That includes Alderman Donnellin, one of the five white male council members here. The other four white male council members, to my knowledge, they have been silent, and their silence says a lot. If they can't be bothered to speak out about Sonia's murder, then what do they actually care about? And where have they been? There were multiple rallies and support gatherings over the past few weeks. They couldn't take an hour from their evenings and weekends to show up? The callous treatment and execution of a black woman by local law enforcement right here in Springfield is receiving a lot of national attention. They still couldn't show up? I suspect they have seen the body cam footage. They still couldn't show up? They still couldn't say something? Not even her name? It's Sonia Massey, by the way. Sonia's life mattered. She was a black woman, and her life mattered, but she was also a member of the Springfield area community. How many more people need to die before the city finally starts serious police reform? Do Springfield officials care only about victims only when they live on the West Side or only when they have light skin? If all council members were at the gatherings, like the one last night, maybe they would feel something deep and visceral that would push them to act? Or do we need to find and elect other people who will do the necessary work of protecting black citizens? Because I refuse to sit back while my friends and community suffer. Sonia Massey's last words were an apology, but I think it's some of the council members who should apologize and be rebuked for their silence and their failure to act. That disregard seems on par with Sean Grayson's cruel and heartless. To the city, reform the hiring, training, and discipline practices for Springfield police. Remove officers to show zero tolerance for racism. Remember the pain that has been inflicted upon the black community. Their ancestors carried that pain. Now they carry it. Don't make their descendants carry it.
Thank you.
Alice Ramey. Janice Davis. James Meister.
My name is James Meister. I've been here before. I've been here many times with pretty much every administration since I moved here back in two thousand and nine. I have been talking about the policing problem in this area. We're not talking just city. We're talking county. We're talking state police. We're talking the hospital police. We're talking the college police. We're talking all police. Not just one. This is a problem that's been going on. I've been actually handled and escorted out of here, 'cause I told one of the mayors when I first came here that the police should, should lead by example, not do as I say, not as I do. Because I caught and videotaped the police riding bicycles on the sidewalks downtown, and there's an ordinance against that. I brought it to the council, and I was escorted out of here. A few months ago, I came and complained about a, um, right of mine that was violated. This committee here had pretty much dismissed me and told me to go to the police department. I went to the police department. I filed FOIA request, FOIA request, Freedom of Information Act. I filed a complaint against the officer. Very quickly, I got a reply about the FOIA request asking for the officer's body cam and the cam from the, from the vehicles. Denied. Why am I being denied something that involved me? What is the police afraid of? I had yet to hear a thing about the complaint. I had filed multiple complaints about the police. I had yet to hear a complaint about anything. I married a woman that had a FOIA card, firearms identification card. She had multiple guns. Our home got broke into. Some of them guns were stolen. This has been four to five years ago. I had yet to hear a word about that. She has passed away two and a half years ago. Not a word. I'm against the BLM street being named. Not because black lives don't matter. It's because all lives matter. Why is it the only time we see this is when it's a white cop shooting a black person? Cops shoot people no matter what their color. There's a cop in Macomb that decided his firearm was the answer. The one shot was to stop a suspect from holding a knife to a child. The officer shot both of them with one shot and killed them both. The police department in Macomb has determined that that was not excessive. Any death of a victim is excessive, much less a child. So I'm gonna give you an offer. Many years ago, we didn't have less than lethal. We do now. I believe that all officers... Springfield backs up Sangamon County. Sangamon County backs up Springfield. We are all one entity. Less than lethal needs to be trained and required to be carried by all officers that are on the streets. It should be talking first, then less than lethal. A firearm should not be until dead last. As far as the threat of this man telling her that he's gonna shoot her in the face, I've had Springfield officers threaten to shoot me. I've heard Springfield officers threaten to shoot other people. Funny thing is, is the one place I hear them doing it is all on the East Side. The East Side is not just black. It's all colors, but wait a minute, what do they have in common? Under thirty thousand dollars a year. Let's make the police departments, all officers on the street, carry less than lethal. Give them the next option before they keep shooting people. Thank you.
Alderwoman, No. Toronto. I know you got something for me.
Yeah, I, I would just like to, um, have it on the record that saying all lives matter is inappropriate, and it gives me the feeling that the person saying it is racist.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, this isn't about you. This isn't about any white person right now. This is about us stepping back and taking a look at our privilege and our positions in society and saying enough's enough, and, just like the woman said last night, calling each other out. So, sir, that's what I'm doing. I'm calling you out. Chair, I'm sorry.
You can't talk. Your time is up.
My, my apologies, Chair. I'm correcting the record.
Director, Sima.
Yeah.
I got you.
So, um, I, I would just like to caution anybody who comes in here and says all lives matter. I personally don't want to hear it. And I was unsure whether or not I was going to comment tonight, um, but now that I've started speaking, um, I would just like to say, as, uh, another speaker had said, um, and someone said last night, that, uh, so, news flash, there is a neo-Nazi and white supremacist movement in this country, in this state, in this city, okay? So let's all accept that and understand that, and then I want everyone to understand that these folks amongst themselves talk about infiltrating the government, specifically infiltrating the police. We have to pay attention to this. It's a real threat. Um, I even, I know the ACLU has defined it as a threat. I even think the FBI has defined it as a threat. So we have to do more. It's, it's not good enough anymore to stand up and say all lives matter or to stand up and, and center ourselves. What we have to do is make sure that the, the systems of power, like the police force, are being more than just doing things to, to keep up appearances and appear not racist. We have to actually be anti-racist. That's what I want to see from Springfield police. That's what I want to see from the county sheriffs, and frankly, that's what I want to see from everyone up here. We owe it to the next generation to start being anti-racist. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Donnellin.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Posey has asked if he could come to the podium.
Sure. Director.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Um, just one quick request I have. I, I do want to start by commending, um, the people that we have here in our community for how peaceful that our protests have been. Um, I've lived in cities all across this country, and sadly, in situations like this, that's not always the case, and I understand how angry people are and how upset people are, but I think our community members here in Springfield have done an exemplary job of leading protests and marches that have been very peaceful and outspoken and well-organized. However, with that being said, I would like to request of the people of Springfield that moving forward, as we have more protests and as we have more marches, that we do a better job of communicating with those who own, operate, or run our establishments, whether it be a church, whether it be a bar, whether it be a nonprofit organization, whether it be anyone's house in the community. I just want to emphasize that we make sure those who are organizing the marches and the rallies, you communicate with the person who's in charge of that property or organization first, so that way we can okay that with them, so we're not causing any undue division or tension within and amongst the community itself by us not communicating on an issue that I'm sure that we all agree on.
Thank you. Chief Scarlett?
There's been a lot of stuff discussed tonight, and I, I have answers to a lot of the questions, and I'm going to forget a lot of, uh, what was asked of me, uh, so please bear with me. And I'm gonna begin by saying this. The last three weeks, today included, have been hell on me. And as hard as that's been for me as a leader of this police department, it's just a drop in the bucket for what Sonia Massey's fa, Sonia Massey's family is experiencing. I recognize that, and again, I said it last night, and I'll say it again, my heart breaks for that family. She was senselessly murdered by a person who wears a uniform very similar to this, by a person that wears a badge similar to mine, by a person who swore to uphold the same oath that I did. And because of that, I'm mad. I'm extremely frustrated. I'm embarrassed. I'm ashamed that that person would ever call himself a law enforcement officer. And yet, as the chief of Springfield, I'm left with what's next in our community. And as a leader of law enforcement, I've got broad shoulders, and I can certainly say this, I'll take responsibility for what someone that wore a similar uniform did, because that's unacceptable. I never, ever want to see that again, and certainly, what we've heard tonight, did not think that that would happen in our community. I've worked extremely hard to build relationships with various groups, and you've heard a lot of them speak tonight. I have meetings with each one of them. We have worked hard in this community to repair relationships, to build trust, and I'll continue to do that. But this one rogue deputy has ruined a lot of the progress that we've made. And so you have my pledge as we move forward, that it's now my job, again, as a leader of Springfield Police Department, to rebuild that trust, rebuild relationships. And that's what I'm committed to do. You talk about reform and change, and I know, uh, previous Alderwoman Turner in two thousand and twenty put forth an ordinance about police reform, and I pulled that. And we've done a lot of the stuff that was asked of us then, as well as became in compliance, I'm sorry, accredited, uh, as a law enforcement agency through ILEAP, only one of twenty-one agis, agencies in the entire state that's, has tier-two accreditation through ILEAP. We talk about hiring reform because of what happened with Aaron Nichols and Nick Renfro, who I heard, both of which were fired as a result of their egregious acts. I met with Vanessa Knox, and we changed our hiring practices. We added measures to do our best to avoid any more Aaron Nichols, because that's the last thing I ever want to see in a police agency. So I'm willing to listen. I'm here to hear the frustration from the people in our community. I'm here to hear the frustration from the people in our community. And it may not be my fault. There's two officers in the back who wear a blue uniform just like me. Certainly not their fault what transpired, but we will bear the shame and the guilt for what a fellow law enforcement officer did in our community. And that's, from what I've heard, has made international news in what we're left with. So because of some of the stuff that's happened previously, I put a transparency page in place on our website, and it has access to all of our department general orders. I'm working on a tab on this transparency site that will cover a lot of the questions that were asked of law enforcement last night, because people deserve to know that those who wear this uniform are light years ahead of other law enforcement agencies in this state, in this county. And that's because of each one of you, because you've dedicated funds, you've dedicated resources for training, you've dedicated funds for equipment through VR goggles, through simulators, through professional training that we bring in. Not as checkboxes, no, not at all, to make my men and women better, more professional. Are there going to be instances that Alderwoman purchased that you speak of? That's going to happen. Unfortunately, part of this job involves using force, and in that particular case, the gentleman was a revoked driver with no license with fictitious plates, which is a class-four felony, and an illegal weapon in visible sight by the officer and an open can of alcohol. Maybe we didn't hear all those facts ahead of time. And I get it. Absolutely terrible timing. And if there is a way that we can do policing better, then that's what the message I've delivered to my men and women. But that all, that particular instance all could have been stopped if the driver who didn't have a license chose to obey the law and not drive in the first place. And again, we're not a perfect agency. I'll be the first to admit that. But you have my pledge, you have my promise, that we will continue to get better. I will work with each one of you. I will continue to work with our community members, and we're going to make Springfield a safer place and a place where anyone can pick up the phone and call for our assistance, and we'll deliver that. So I'd be certainly willing to entertain any questions that you may have.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, and thank you for that, Chief. I'll just say, yes, there's two sides to every story. The several videos I got, that was one of them. But I also, when I checked, I heard what you just said on why to stop and what was seen, and you're correct. You know, our officer did some things that on the video appears to be bad, but then when you look at it in its entirety, you kind of understand more. But I just had a question about tomorrow's activity. Are you aware of the scheduled activity tomorrow with out-of-towners coming in?
Tomorrow? No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday?
Thursday?
Thursday. So you are aware of that?
Sure, we're tracking, yes.
Okay. Do they have an estimate of how large?
So we have an intelligent unit that kind of tracks some of that stuff. We follow the shares on social media and whatnot, and I'll talk with you in private, if that's okay, about kind of what the information we have on that.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware, but...
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
And we'll talk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief Scarlett, for addressing us too, because last night was a time for us to be quiet and let the community address us. And I know they was frustrated because they thought we should have been answering them back, doing that Q and A, open dialogue. One thing I wanted to commend you on and be very open and transparent when we've been having conversations, sometimes our community just doesn't understand the processes that's already in place. Yes, you got a tab that you're putting out there for everybody to click on and go read, but I think it's going to have a bigger impact and be more meaningful when we have those discussions in the community. And you explain to them what's the process. If somebody, you know, feels like they were dead wrong when they encounter a situation between our officers, and then where do you go from there? And then how do people... I know, again, me and Sean was in the park, and they said, how come this commission that was formed hasn't been meeting? And those are questions we can't answer, but you can be able to explain, well, what is that process? What does it do, along with Director Posey? And those are going to be some of the tough conversations that's going to happen inside of the community, too. But I wanted to acknowledge that you are open and make sure that everybody is not bringing us together as one to say that we're all bad. We're not. We have great officers on our police department. I remember when I first came in and started asking you all to do neighborhood walks with me, so that our neighborhoods in Ward 5 and just throughout the city would feel comfortable and know who you are, who the new MPOs are. So we have to acknowledge the things that we're doing as SPD that we've never seen Sangamon County do. And it's not to go back and forth and tit for tat, but I think also just the community needs to hear what we have been doing, because some of them just may not know.
I think you and I talked about that on the phone maybe a few days ago, was that sometimes we don't tout the good work that we do and/or the quality training that we deliver to our officers. And community meetings or events like that are perfect opportunities to address some of that stuff. And my goal with the transparency tab is to say, here it is. You know, this is everything that we do. And I know that's a lot of clicking and reading and whatnot, but in the same token, it's important for people to see exactly all the stuff that we do. You know, I let's be the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board mandates specific training. This all came out as part of the Safety Act. Thirty hours that officers are required, the minimum standard, that officers are required to have in a 36-month period, if I'm saying that right. I randomly pulled one of our officers. He's at 243 training hours up to this point. And that's because our department prides itself on the training, and, you know, people from other agencies look to us, what we're doing. And again, that all revolves around the resources that you provide to the department.
Alderwoman, no Seattle. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you for coming last night. It was important to have you there, and I think you shared a really important message. I also wanted to just mention the other officers that I saw there that weren't wearing uniforms, that came to listen and participate. That meant a lot. And I've noticed that we have a little bit more security in the building. Am I... Yeah. So I... Perhaps you have intelligence that I don't, but I would prefer, we haven't seen anything violent in the community, and I would prefer that we maybe be more low-key with that extra security, because again, I don't want us overreacting when there's no need for that. Yeah, so that's it.
Thank you so much, Alderwoman. So Chief, I'll finish up by saying, you know, in 2020, when we worked on that, I worked on it very closely with Alderwoman Turner. I know Alderwoman Purchase mentioned something about the Police Review Commission, and I think in that ordinance that you have, I don't have mine, but I know one of the things we did change is that all complaints go to that commission. When I was young then, I was only a year in, and it says May. So some of the changes that we're going to have to do is shall. All of those things need to go over there to them to give a different opinion, even if it differs from yours, or it may be the same for yours. But I think all complaints do need to go to that commission so they can do that. So those are some of the things that we do need to look at within that, is, you know, what's being done and what's not being done with May and shals. I think that is important. But I will say this, there's nobody probably around this horseshoe that's going to yell as loud as me about police activities and things and getting those reports. And what I have learned is to have those conversations and understand the full story before, you know, coming up here and doing all those things. That's what I've learned over the years. I remember when Chief Winslow was retiring and the former Mayor Langfelder was to replace him, and one of the questions he asked was about you, what I think as a leader of this community here. And still to this day, I have full confidence in you, because I know that you will listen. We don't always agree, but you are a good chief, and I've told you that before. I believe in what we've done, and, you know, in every aspect. We talk about all the funding, we got co-responders, mental health professionals that go around with our police officers, the $3 million that I'd be fussing about to get out to the community. But guess what? Not only does that have $645,000 for community groups, it has several different mechanisms for our officers to get out and do community work. I think that's important. I always speak on that, and I believe our department believes in that also. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. And, but I will say that anything that comes to me goes to Chief, and we discuss it, and he handles that business and looks at it. You know, recently, there was an email sent to us about a suggestion. Before I could get back to the, see what his response was, he had corrected that issue, and that was some identification on one of our investigative units. So I know there's some questions out there about how we handle business here, but I think that we have always shown at this council that not only are we going to give them the tools, every tool that they need and that we can afford to do their job successfully, but we're also going to hold people accountable. We've seen people, you know, police fired and all types of things like that. When is just? So I look forward to fruitful conversations and things. I don't want too many conversations. I think we just need to look at some things and make some adjustments that are recommended by our community and keep doing it. I mean, and this has come by from somebody that fusses all the time. I live in our community. I've been pulled over, you know, twice since I've been sitting up here. So, but with that, I still respect our department and respect our officers. So I just want to commend you and thank you for coming yesterday. That's a big deal for our department. I know we're going to catch the brunt of it, because we're the most visible. These, us as council members, we're the most visible. There's 29 county board members, and all of us are getting the heat. So we understand as council members, and we'll do anything we can to make things better, funding-wise and things of that nature. So I appreciate you, and if you need anything from me, let me know.
Thank you, and I appreciate our conversations, and I welcome conversations. I've had multiple conversations with every one of you, and that's how communication is how we accomplish a lot of stuff. And I'm going to, if I can just end on one note that I would be remiss if I didn't say. In 2018, the Springfield Police Department adopted the Ten Shared Principles, and that's a, you know, a great set of examples that is the very first training task that our officers understand and recognize. And the very first principle is that we, and when I say we, the officers of the Springfield Police Department, value all human life is principle number one. And I firmly believe that. And somebody didn't value human life on July 6th, and that's an absolute tragedy and a shame. But I can assure you that the men and women of the Springfield Police Department firmly believe all 10 of those shared principles, to include valuing all human life. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, no more other citizens to speak.
Motion, Doris Rock. It's been moved and seconded to a John. Have a good night.